I'd like to start this meeting of the city council. Tonight, this is our regular meeting for the city. It's December 3rd, 2014, at approximately 6:30 PM. At this time, we'd like to stand and call order and also to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Thanks, everybody, for attending tonight. It's always good to see people interested in our council meetings when certain issues are coming up, so appreciate you guys taking some time this evening to attend, also the people at our home. Currently, right now, on the list of things that we need to be looking at is the approval of the agenda. And the one thing before we decide to look at making any type of an approval on this, this may be concerned some of the people that are here this evening. The one thing that we did have on our agenda, which would have been numbers eight and number nine, which concerning the water ordinance, that's requiring all city buildings and residents be connected, pardon me, to the municipal water system, and prohibiting the use of private water supplies and wells, and then also number nine, which would be considered mandatory sewer hookup. I feel currently, right now, we're actually short one council member here. I think when we had the last public hearing concerning some of these issues, that I felt it was something that really needed to be looked at, and decisions need to be made if we're going to move forward, and I prefer to move forward with a full council. So it's something that's not overly pressing right now, that we need to move on, you know, instantly. It's not something that, you know, we're going to make people do in the next couple weeks or the next couple months. It's just we've kept it on the agenda here, that it's something that we need to continually look at as a city. So the majority of the people that might be here tonight, you know, I was feeling that because we're short one council member, that maybe it's not a good time to absolutely act on this and make this a part of our agenda this evening. So, you know, I'm sorry if some of you came out particularly just for this, which, you know, I apologize, but I'm just feeling, as the mayor currently right now, that I would rather have our full council here, and then we can really sit and discuss this properly and get everybody's opinions. So to be able to approve the agenda this evening, I guess I'm looking for a motion to approve with the elimination of considering numbers eight and number nine also on the agenda, so that, I'm looking for an approval for that this evening. If any council member has questions pertaining to that, yeah, Pat?
Mr. Mayor, are we going to definitely tell these people that we're going to act on it on a certain time, not that they come out at the next meeting or the next workshop, and, you know, the thing is, they have a timeline too.
Right, exactly. Um, yeah, go ahead.
I like seeing Tom, if that's okay.
The thing is, I just, I hate to bring people out in 20 miles of weather if there's no need that they're interested in what's going on. I enjoy people here, also.
Right, exactly.
Are we definitely going to, since I know since the last public hearing, we've got some more information, dug up some different things.
We, yeah.
Some history of what went on, and that is privy to everybody that's here. You can stop and see Marty tomorrow or whenever, and to make this decision, if you prefer a full council, I'm totally supportive of that.
Right.
But the thing is, that we do tell these people what date it's going to be decided, so if they have any input at that time, they, it'll be done.
Okay.
Is it going to be, you just mentioned there isn't anything really pressing in the workshop in December, so then it would definitely be the monthly meeting in January, is that true?
Go ahead.
If I could add to that, I would say yes, it would be on the January agenda, but mind you, we have a different mayor taking over at that time, so I can't guarantee it. But my understanding is you'll have a full council on January 7th.
Okay.
So.
The only thing is, we're not going to have, if we don't have a regular meeting or a workshop meeting, we're really not going to have a lot of time to discuss it amongst the council, either.
Right.
I mean, like I said, we have a few new things that we found out about different properties or different scenarios on what's in writing and what's not in writing, so, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I'd like to see us at least have a workshop somewhere along the line, so now we're pushing it all the way out into February. I mean, nobody's going to be hooking water and sewer up anytime soon, but I would say by February, the meeting would be the next time that we probably put on the, we'll talk about it at our, probably our workshop.
Right, right.
I mean, I'd like our class, a chance to talk at a workshop about it.
That would be February 4th, then.
I'm just, for them not that they're coming here every meeting.
That's my point.
Right, and I think what Pat's getting at, and probably would answer a lot of the questions to the public here that's currently here tonight, is that, okay, if we do push this into next year, you know what, give us a timeline. What are you guys thinking here? Is this something that you would make a complete decision on? You know, would that be February? Would that be March? I think, is that kind of where you're leaning to this, Pat?
I'm just saying.
So we would just kind of, they would know exactly that we're going to act on it with a full council.
Some relatives have traveled to get here in support of their family, and I'm just saying, to keep on bringing them out, we should give them a date.
Right, I think so too. I agree with that. I would, I do agree with that, that that is something that, that we would need to, just to make sure that we're going to act on this 100% with full council, and then just give it the deadline date.
I don't have any problem acting on it in February.
You don't have any problem with that?
In February.
In February?
Definitely, that if the mayor-elect sees that, there should be a workshop or discussion period in between new council, I'll support that, too.
Alright, Jeff, do you have any concerns at all on this?
If it's something where it's going to be canceled, maybe we could get the numbers of some people, where we could call them and let them know that it's not going to be on the agenda, just so they don't have to be here, but don't turn the tables and all of a sudden do something with it.
That's right.
Right, exactly, right, that's a good point, that's a great.
They should plan with your approval February 4th.
Yeah. Do we have some questions at all, any concerns from the public? It's a good time just for you to chat about this, and feel, you know, what, I mean, what do you think? Is that, is that a fair enough deadline from a time point as of February 4th, when we have our full council here? The only person that will be not on this council beginning of this next year will be Jeff. Jeff Mokadon's will no longer be a councilman, okay? So, but the remainder of us will actually still be, some of us switching different chairs at that time. I'll be back on the council, Jim will be back as the mayor, Pat will be on the council, and then Josh. Josh, are you here? I thought I saw you snuck in. There he is. Josh Worm, in the back over there, he will be the other acting council member at this time. He'll obviously be newly acclimated, he'll have to get his feet wet right away here to be able to make some decisions, so. Anybody have any comments from the public at all on this? What's your feeling? It is actually something we are going to have to act on, there is no question about it. We can't just table it and forget about it and let it go. That will not happen. That will not happen. Something will be decided on, and again, too, giving you the timeline here, it will be decided on, on that February 4th meeting, because then, that at least then start the ball rolling, you know, for some people that it's going to affect. Okay? If you have some comments or anything that you want, you can come up to the podium if you like, if you have any questions. If you don't feel very comfortable coming up to the podium, you can just tell us who you are, and then let us know, okay? Because we did have the public hearing the other time, some people were here for that. They did voice their opinions on some of the things that we needed to look into. Again, too, Jim made the comment that we are currently, right now, we looked at some of these particular situations and some things that we needed to look at. Could there be some more? Yeah, exactly, there might be some more issues that may be coming up, that, again, too, we'll need to discuss in a workshop. I think Jim was, you know, pretty good about that. One of the things that we would need to do with the workshop with, with full council, okay? So anybody else, anybody have any comments on this at all? Please feel free, let us know what you're thinking. Anybody? Yes, you bet.
Roger Harberding, Watkins.
Oh.
I'm here with Martha Gerken.
Oh, okay, alright.
You mentioned that there's some new information that has surfaced since last meeting, and I'm just wondering if you can share that.
This is all public information.
Right.
And rather than, you can probably get written copies from.
I have no new information on Martha Gerken's property.
No. Some on the South Side edition, some of the written stuff that they pulled up from 2009 or 2010.
Correct.
Right.
In that ballpark, that's available, and that's why I said to stop by and talk to Marty about it, they'll outline some of the different areas there, and we're still digging.
Okay, right. It's not affecting everybody that, you grant that there were some questionable things from the public hearing that people were wondering about when they brought up, you know, and those are the things that we really needed to look at, we needed to investigate a little bit more. I think that's what Jim was bringing up also, and so was Pat.
Mr. Mayor.
So, great question, though.
If I could bring us back to.
Sure.
Try to bring us back to focus. We're looking for approval of the agenda to remove items eight and nine. If we want to leave it on the agenda to take comment, we can do that. Otherwise, you're looking for a motion to remove it.
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, so we have them.
Any other additions?
What's that?
I have.
Is there any other additions?
You have no other additions?
I do.
Okay, well, thank you, yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Pat. I wasn't sure if there was anything else. Okay, so, we have a motion by Jim, and a second by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay, great, so thank you very much, so.
I want to remind you.
Yeah, no, just before you leave, okay, before you leave, alright, we appreciate you coming out tonight, thank you very much. Sorry if this was a little bit of an inconvenience, you know, for you. Again, too, you know, we don't want to be making any rash decisions minus one particular council member, because that particular person does get a vote also, and he has a voice, and he's just currently not here this evening. So it was, it was kind of from the city administrator, plus my decision as the mayor to be able to table this tonight, okay? This kind of came last second, alright, so it wasn't something that we've been talking about for weeks, it just came up tonight on this, alright? So I just want to make sure that we're clear with that. But we also want to make sure that you're clear now, that February 4th, city council meeting, okay, we will be, we'll first have, obviously, workshops prior to this to discuss this, and then we will be making a motion and put this then into play as of February 4th, okay? So if you have some concerns prior to that, obviously, we want to hear from you in January, and we also want to hear from you and the possibility of the workshop, too, because everything's open to the public. And all the information, actually, that we've been discussing here this evening and from the public hearing, is always open to the public. So anytime you want, any informational stuff, you know, feel free to let us know. Marty will be more than happy to dig what he can dig up for you and help you out, okay? Any other questions before you leave? Okay? Oh, Jeff, I'm sorry, oh, geez.
And also, if they find any information themselves that they can bring in, just for it.
Yes, that's a, that's a great point. By all means, if you have something, you know, that seems to be missing from our point that you have record of, you know, by all means, please bring that into the city. It can nothing but, it can nothing but help you, there is no question about it, it can help you, okay? So, alright, anybody else? Anybody else in the council? Okay? Leave with smiling, happy faces. Thank you very much for coming tonight, okay? And hopefully, we'll see you tomorrow night. Tomorrow night from 5 to 8 o'clock downtown, alright? Okay. Got a bunch of other exciting things if you want to stick around. Okay, thank you so much. Alright. Okay, so moving right along, number three, the approval of the meeting minutes from November 2nd and November 20th. Anybody have any questions or concerns at all? Did anybody see anything that they noticed that needs to be corrected?
November 12th.
November 12th?
You said November 2nd.
Oh, I did, I said November 2nd. Thanks, Jeff. November 12th and the 20th. Okay? Anybody have any questions at all? If not, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
So moved.
By, a motion by Pat?
Second.
Seconded by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Next on the agenda is the approval of the bills paid. Again, too, at this time, hope everybody had the opportunity to be able to take a look at these. Any questions or any concerns currently, right now, on some of the bills that need to be paid? Hopefully Marty should be able to answer them. Anybody have any questions at all, had an opportunity to be able to take a look through them prior to?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, Jeff has made a motion to approve, looking for a second. Seconded by Pat, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Alright, consent agenda for this evening, we're going to approve this all in one motion. First of all, Resolution 201-14, that is the acceptance of October slash November 2014 donations. You should have had a copy of that, that 2000, pardon me, that donation actually would be in your packet, there should be a copy of that. That is a request, actually, from the Richmond Firefighters Relief Association. That is, City Rich for the Fire Department, those are for the new helmets. That was the $3,400 for the new helmets that they just recently received, okay? Second, resolution is 202-14, that's the approval of the November 2014 journal entries, and Resolution 203-14 is the acknowledgement and accepting legal representation, boy, pardon me, and 2015 rates. Okay, anybody have any questions at all, or any concerns relating to the consent agenda that they would like to discuss currently, right now, before we approve everything?
Question for city administrator, Bodie, how much is this up or down? Is it 2%, 1%, 5%?
I don't even think it was 1%.
1%?
I did look at, compared to last year, it was like $2 on each category.
You talking about the rates, Marty?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
It was nominal.
It was a nominal increase, okay?
121 went to like 123.
Okay, 123, okay. Alright, any other questions or concerns at all?
With that question answered, I make a motion to approve consent agenda 201-14, 202-14, 203-14.
Okay, we have a motion on the table by Pat, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you. Alright, number six, presentation and action items. We have a truth in taxation public hearing, actually, going on right now. Okay, so at 6:47 this evening, we are looking at opening up.
For public comment.
For public comment, actually, if anybody has any comment on the truth in taxation. That might be here currently this evening, so. Okay, anybody have anything concerning the truth in taxation? Anybody have anything concerning the truth in taxation?
Hearing no comments and seeing no, I made a motion to, close, to close.
Okay, so I have a motion by Pat to close the public hearing, looking for a second.
So moved.
Okay, seconded by Jim, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay, we'll open the meeting back up again, now at 6:49, approximately. We're going to move on to number seven, the 2015 budget. This is a consideration, Resolution 204-14, approving the 2015 tax levy and annual budget. This particular one, obviously, we've been discussing for a while. We figured that we have come out to a close and fair budget without, without raising taxes. Correct, Marty?
That is a true statement.
Okay, so hopefully, everybody here on the council is accepting of this. We're obviously working, again, for the taxpayers of Richmond. We are trying to be fair and upfront and honest, and everybody does a really good job working with this. So at this time, I'm looking for Resolution 204-14, the approval of the tax levying annual budget. Or does anybody have any questions or concerns on that? We've pretty much discussed this a lot, but before approving, does anybody have any questions?
Has this amending phrase always been in there?
Yes.
Where at? I didn't see it last.
Oh, sure, yeah, that's standard.
That's standard.
We're very much in support of that.
Okay.
Going from one, that the budget is only a total number from one, one division or one department to another department, that is free to move money.
Right.
With that, I approve the budget for the year 2015.
Alright, motion by Pat, second?
Second.
Seconded by Jeff, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Alright, so we obviously have removed items number eight and removed number nine from the agenda, just for this evening only. We will be getting back and discussing these further, and making, hopefully, some decisions as of 2015 on the February 4th meeting. Alright, up next, number 10, is the EDA year-end report, and we have, the president of the EDA is here this evening to give us a full insight of how the EDA did for the year. It's Mr. Sheldon Lang. Thanks so much for attending tonight, Sheldon.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council members. You should have an itinerary in front of you, and I'm going to kind of go through that. If there's any questions as we go through, please stop me and see if we can answer anything. This is our 2014 planning and marketing activities that we've done. And one of the items we've done, and you should have that on your table as well, we created an EDA brochure. And the brochure talks about available business incentives, it talks about the purpose of the EDA, there's a questions in, in the sheet in there, it's pretty fulfilling on what we thought the people or anybody that would pick up this brochure could have the information that they needed. And council member Pat Evans has said several times, he is an EDA member as well, and he says, "A lot of people don't know what, what is the EDA. They don't know what the EDA is or what we do." So that was one of our missions, to try to get more information out there, and we've made, I think, probably about 100, 150 of these, and they were handed out, and all our EDA members should have several in their briefcase as well, that they can hand out when they talk to people. So it was a great incentive for us to put this together. Number, item two, we established a Realtor's Report Criteria, and that's viewed monthly. And the reason for that is, we needed to know every month what our Realtor has accomplished. They need to report the people they contacted, did they have any sales opportunities, where has that month taken them? If it's stagnant, then we don't need that Realtor. We need to have somebody that's out there and at least trying to move the property that we've got. So that, that's worked out well. And so at every EDA meeting, we go through that monthly review that the Realtor has brought forth.
Sheldon, just for the public, tonight, too, especially, do you want to kind of just give them an idea of which particular properties that we currently are working with right now that are up for sale?
We have two more pieces of property, we call it tower acres, but it's significantly, it's, there's one and, one parcel one and parcel two, that are either sold together or separate, depends on what the Realtor can put together. So those are the two properties that the EDA is trying to move. The first property, we already have moved, and that's where the Dollar General is on. Okay?
Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome. Number three, we set up and funded the BRE, B-R and E. That stands for Business Retention and Expansion Program. And this is an exciting program that we have put together, and at this point, we have a leadership team, training team, that's been set up. We've also set up a grant application to the Initiative Foundation for $4,500. That application has been applied, and that will go towards the BRE, our Business Retention and Expansion. And basically, what that is, it's, it's business people getting together and discussing the options that they would have in relation to their business, and in a small town, what, what can we do? How can we enhance anything? How do we keep our businesses active? That's basically what this program is all about. We also started a CEF, that's called the Commercial Enhancement Fund, and that's for businesses enrichment, matching up to $1,500 on any, any beautification or repair or on their exterior of their building. As of today, we have four participants that have taken advantage of that. And that is also, I think, an exciting program for us, because it just, one of our EDA members came up with this idea, and, and as we discussed it, we thought it was a good idea, and I think it is, because what it does, it does, it puts back, things back into the community. And if we can put something back in the community, then our, our goals are being accomplished. And this is one way that we are trying to accomplish this. We also formatted EDA signage, and this is for general use. In other words, if these people that have taken advantage of the Enhancement Fund, they can put their, put that sign out in front of their building, and it just says "EDA", doesn't say anything other than it's general. So we can use it for other things, too, if the EDA is going to put on some other function, we can use it, just, that's basically what we decided. I think we had, I think we made 15 of them. Another thing we've done is we set up press releases on EDA activities, and hopefully we can continue on with that when new activities come about, we'll get them out in the, in the public, so they can actually read on it. Another thing that we've established about, I think it's almost a year and a half, maybe two years now, an EDA revolving loan for $30,000. And at this time, there was no, there are no businesses that have taken advantage of it. We've had one or two that looked into it, discussed it, filled out some of the paperwork, but it didn't, didn't go any farther, so hopefully that, that will be something that'll, can be used down the road as well. The EDA also set up a link in the City of Richmond's website, which we will be updating as new events take place, so if you go in the website, you can kind of see what we've done so far. And another last item, which is just a promotional item, I guess, we set up an EDA grand opening for the Dollar General, and that was well, that was well attended. So that's pretty much our 2014, but 2015, we will definitely continue with these marketing activities, and we're going to help create property and growth in our small town. That's our, that's our goal. That's all I have, did you have any questions?
Council members, does anybody have any questions for Sheldon Lang at all pertaining to the EDA? Just want to say, Sheldon, that one of the things that the council was actually looking at was, was overall, what, what does the EDA do? What have they have been doing, you know? And being able to come out and, and give a report, a year-end report like this, to the council members that are here this evening, it gives everybody an enlightenment on where the EDA is headed and where they're going. I truthfully think, being on the council and also being on the EDA, the EDA has made some big strides this year, you know, and that was one of the things, I think, as a council, that, that we wanted all to see. We wanted to see what's the EDA doing, where are they going with everything? And we want to make sure that they're a viable entity continually for the city, and I think with your report here and the things that are going, and we're looking at for 2015, I can see nothing but great, positive things that are going to continually happen. So appreciate the opportunity for you coming this evening, taking some time to be able to give us this report, it helps. It helps out a lot and hopefully answers a lot of questions, actually, for the council members and also for the public. So anybody else have anything for Sheldon at all?
I would like to ask the council, as you have your meetings and your discussions of different things, if you think of anything that we can help with or start up or move forward in anything, that's how these things, that's how most of these things took place. Talking about it, people bring it up to us and that. So it's a, it's a good collaboration of the council and our, and our EDA.
Just one comment from Mr. Lang is that at the previous workshop slash meeting we had two weeks ago, there was an individual here very interested in a piece of property on Main Street. I think you can get the name from Marty. Maybe it's worthwhile seeing if they would be interested in revolving loan. Would be into the tax forfeit of property.
Okay.
So I think if you give Marty a call tomorrow and I take up extra time here, he can give you the name, maybe he can make a call and see if we can help that way.
I'll call you on the road. That's where I'll be.
Thanks.
If it helps, if that individual does have their finance in mind, just to let you know that. That was a great thought.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Put it all through for the...
Exactly. All right, great. Anybody else? If not, thank you very much, Sheldon, for attending this evening. Appreciate that. Okay, we have, number 11 is the People's Service Written Report. Hopefully, everybody had an opportunity to be able to read that. I really don't think I need to do too much highlighting on that. It seems like everything is going pretty smooth. Anybody have any questions at all or anything pertaining to the written report? Okay, if not, then we're just going to continually move along. Number 12, we did have the RLCA slash Parks on a written report. We were supposed to have something, but nothing was in the packet, so Kevin...
Mr. Mooney apologized, Director Mooney apologized. He swamped at the arena right now.
Right.
And he didn't get at it.
And as a resident of Richmond, especially last evening, when I came into town, I know there was, must have been a pretty big hockey game going on because there were not a lot of parking spaces even available anywhere, even up and down some of the side streets. So must have been well attended, so. All right, so we're going to move along. The fire department? Oh, Jim, I'm sorry, yeah. Thanks, Jim.
They do have one thing on the arena, they did flood up the back rink this weekend.
Oh, they, oh!
Which is probably earlier than normal, but it is flooded.
Definitely ready for Christmas.
I'm pretty sure.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Thanks, Jim. I did not even know that. Okay, so obviously, residents of Richmond, please keep an eye on when that particular rink might be opening. Please also make sure that you are not going on that before it's ready. Sometimes when that happens is, if you prematurely go on ice, you can damage it and it may not come back as well through the remainder of the year. So make a point of that, but hopefully, they'll have that up and operational, you know, right before Christmas holiday season here. Thank you, Jim, for that. All right, fire department, we do have a report from Chuck, but I'm going to table that one right now in case Chuck does happen to come. You also do have a written report. Okay, the next thing is on number 14, is the council reports. Obviously, we have the EDA up. Wow, Sheldon Lang just came in, gave us a pretty well full report on what's going on with the EDA. Pat, do you have anything to add to that?
No, he covered it basically on a year-end type thing.
Pretty much did, yeah.
The only thing I would like to mention that both revolving loan and the Enhancement Fund for any business still has money there.
Still has money there.
If they would plan on something to do to their, in front of their business, to spruce, I'm just going to call it spruce it up. Apply now. There is funds available, even if you're going to be doing it in early spring.
Okay, great. Thank you. And do we, I don't, I'm trying to think, do we have a scheduled meeting for this month?
I don't, I don't have my calendar with me.
I don't, and I don't either. I'm not, I apologize to the public.
It's December 11th.
December 11th. Okay, I guess next week, we have a meeting for the EDA on December 11th at the maintenance building. That's 6:30. Again, always open to the public. All right, moving right along, the planning commission. Jeff?
Oh, we have nothing to report. We just have a meeting coming up on the 18th.
On the 18th.
There should be a report for you on that, at your January meeting.
All right, okay. All right, wonderful. Thanks, Jeff. All right, Parks and Racory Trail, seeing that nobody else is here, Marty, do you know anything?
Racory Trail is not having a meeting in December due to there's no further discussion on Phase Two. They'll wait for further engineering reports as the project moves along.
Okay, thank you very much for that. The Dry City Cable?
There was no meeting, there was no report. Next meeting is in January, January 8th.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving right along to 15, Request for Council Action. Underneath that, we are looking at Resolution 205-14, Declare Old City Street Christmas Light as Excess Property. Anybody have any questions or concerns on that?
I'd like to tag one thing on whatever they sell this excess property for, that would definitely stay with the Christmas lighting. So if they sell it for five or 800 bucks, it would stay with the Christmas lighting in case they need repairs or in case they need additions to more intersections or whatever.
Right, right.
So.
Okay.
The city administrator just kind of rolled his eyes. Yes, I know it's going to just be another little headache, but as long as that we know that we, if there is, if it gets sold for any insurance.
Right, and that's a great point, too, Pat, because obviously, this year, if everybody in the residents can see the, we've been able to extend our Christmas lights actually down farther, all the way to the end of Main Street right now. So if you come into town, coming off of Highway 23, that really looks good. As you're driving all the way down, there are lights all the way there, so that's great, so. All right, on that note, then, for Resolution 205-14, I am looking for a motion for that.
So moved.
Second. All right, motion by Jim, and we have a second by Pat. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? So carried. Okay. Resolution 206-14, Approving of State Mandated Tier Water Usage Rates. Marty, do you want to comment on that one before we look at making any action on that?
Also, this resolution is in reaction, state mandated requirements that we establish a tier conservation water rate. This, this is certainly something that can be, I would say, it's a breathing resolution. It's not stagnant. It's something that can be amended in the future if we find there's issues with it. What the utility clerk and I did, we took the averages, the high averages for residential, commercial, industrial, and that became the basis for our Tier One. We feel, and it's open for your discussion, that the City of Richmond, particularly in the January, February, November, December, January, February months, they're very conservative water users. And it was our opinion, we would recommend to you that we didn't want to penalize anybody for that conservation that they already exercised. So we took their high usage and made that the high of Tier One, if that makes sense. So Tier Two then starts, if you'll notice that third box from the bottom, starts at 30,001 gallons. That becomes Tier Two. And again, we looked at some statistics at the Minnesota Water Association, and we used, went up to 60,000 for Tier Two. And Tier Three then starts at 60,000, all the way up to unlimited number of gallons. And we tried to be moderate with what we, with what the rates went on. I would note industrial, our recommendation to you is, we don't want to, to promote conservation in industrial rates. We want them to use water. If CND and Granite is using water, that means they're selling more product. If Horseshoe Ice is using more water, they're selling more product, if that makes sense. That's all I have.
The, you say this is being mandated by who, the Department of Natural Resources?
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota, what division do you?
Minnesota State Statute 103G.291, subsection four.
So the House and the Senate passed this apparently last year.
Oh, I think it's even before that.
Oh, right here, 2000.
They gave you five years to have it done.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, I was going to comment on that, Pat, and I forgot what the comment was. You were going on with what? Did you have a question?
I just, I was just wondering, you know, what really brought this on, but if it was a state mandated item, I guess we have to move with it, whether we like to or not.
I would comment that this usage is, is what we feel is domestic usage in January, February, in November, December. So if you water, you're going to be into Tier Two. And for those who are watching, the difference is like $3.30, $36 a thousand versus $3.70 at this time. The council can amend these rates anywhere along the line if we feel we need to raise them to, to be more proactive with encouraging conservation.
So basically, if you're going to water, it's going to cost you $0.34 a thousand more?
That is a true statement. These rates, I think, will be sent to the state to show our compliance. And if they don't like it, they'll probably send a letter.
And I asked for a, and received a kind of a breakdown of all the water and sewer rates within so many miles of the City of Richmond, and we are not the highest, but we're not the lowest.
Right.
Also, we just want to make note of that. We're basically right in the middle. Maybe, maybe one step to the higher end rather than to the lower end, so. So when people say that the rates are too high or high enough, well, that's true, but everybody else is, that's where, that's the cost of getting the product.
I think for, for the public, they should know, we are not raising the average water rates. We're trying very hard not to do that. We feel, this council feels the rates are high enough the way it is. That's why we want the high average for Tier One.
All right, great. Some good comments by everybody. Anybody else have any questions or concerns on this at all? But good discussion period on this. So at this time, we then are looking for an approval of Resolution 206-14, the approval of a state mandated tier water usage rates.
So moved.
Motion by Pat, a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Just a clarification, like you say, that we can, we can tweak this as it goes, as long as it's a tier system, the way I understand from the statements.
Right.
So does that automatically kick in on your, on your, on your water reading?
That's a great question. This will take effect January and February usage, billed in March. This rate will be effective January 1st, but it's for usage in January, not billed in January. Because in January, we bill for November, December usage.
Got it.
This will not be reflected in that usage.
Good question, Jim. Good question on that.
The only other thing I don't know is I did not tier the wastewater side because I don't interpret this mandate to do that. However, some resolutions, cities are also tiering their wastewater side.
I have a question. What if someone has a meter hooked up to sprinklers, to outside source? Does that go from 0 to 30,000 at 3.36?
As it is right now, yes. That's a great question.
Clarify that again, please.
You can set up to where you have a meter in your house to run your water for your house.
Right.
And you also could set up a meter to run what you run for your outdoor usage.
Okay.
Outside usage.
So basically, you can shut off the outside usage if you want to and then take that meter reading?
No, what he's saying is, are they going to be billed at Tier One for water sprinkling? Which is against what we were trying to do here. That's a great question. I would, I would say, in light of that question, I would encourage you to pass this resolution, but that may need to be amended in, in the next couple of months.
Right.
We'll amend the resolution to address the water, water sprinklers. Good point. I didn't catch that.
Are there some, Jeff, are there some, are there some areas in town that are set up that way?
Yes, I think there are a few that have.
Are there a few? Okay, all right.
I think so.
I did not know that.
We do offer a separate meter for commercially installed watering systems.
Okay.
Let me do some research on that, and I'll get back to you if we need to amend the resolution down the road. But I would still encourage you to pass this resolution.
Okay, fine.
The idea of that extra meter is so that you're not getting charged for sewer side of things also, because you're not using the sewer, you're actually putting it on your lawn.
Putting it on your lawn.
So that was the whole purpose of the second one.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for clarification on all of that. Appreciate that. All right, moving along, Resolution 207-14, Approve of the Final Pay Request, number eight, for the 2013 Main Street Project. You have in front of you the, hopefully, the last of the bills for the 2013 Main Street Project. And there should be a final handout here, the five copies stating of what was, what was all finished, what was done. Marty, do you want to elaborate on anything else pertaining to this right now?
No, the only thing that was not in your packet was the actual invoice and the dollar amount. And that dollar amount has been amended on your table resolution.
Right, okay.
And that is the final payment of $24,489.56. And that should finish that project.
Anybody have any questions or concerns before?
All the different, small little things have been taken care of. There was, there was claims about some small damage to property during some concrete and stuff that has been.
Everything reported to this office has been checked off.
That's, thank you.
Great. Good questions, Pat. All right, so at this time, we are looking for an approval for Resolution 207-14.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Jeff, and then a second by Pat. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? So carried. All right, moving along, Purchase, Requisitions, Allocations, and Transfers?
Mr. Mayor and council, in your packet, I did include a purchase requisition. In other words, for my IMC conference that I have attended three out of the last five years. Line one is 2015 IMC Conference, the tuition is 5.75, it does not include travel and lodging.
Okay.
And I'm not necessarily encouraging to approve it tonight. You can table it or tell me to bring it back at a later meeting. It's not, it does not need to be done tonight. It's the number one educational seminar professional organization that I attend, along with, with MCFOA, which is the Minnesota Clerk's Finance Office Organization, and AMGFOA, which is the Minnesota Government. This is the IMC, which I'm certified through as a municipal clerk.
Okay. And the last couple ones that you have attended, do you know where the locations have been for those?
Sure, I was there.
Well, where were they? I'm asking you that.
Last year was Milwaukee.
Yeah, wait a minute. Okay, so.
Last year was Milwaukee, and the one before that was in Reno.
Was in Reno, okay. And this particular one is in Hartford, Connecticut.
That's true.
All right.
It's the International Institute. They share, every state takes a turn, hopefully, hosting. They tried going to Europe, and that really didn't fly with US councils.
Well, understandably. Okay. Anybody have any concerns at all or anything with that? Looking at, we can either, we can either table it or we can just make a recommendation and approve it for this evening, so.
Would you sooner wait until we have the travel and lodging all included already, or do you just want to separate?
It doesn't matter to me. Council, Mac, and that, if you want to table it to the council and put it on that, Mayor, we can do that, too.
Makes no difference.
I mean, either way, you're going to want to send them, you want them to go to school and whatever, so.
Exactly.
I don't see what the purpose of tabling it would be tonight either.
Exactly, that's a good point. All right.
I mean, obviously, we went about three out of five, you said. And they're not going to get that, every year they jump around anyway, so it really don't matter where you're going. It's just a matter of...
Okay.
I would make the motion to have them move forward on getting the paperwork done.
A motion by Jim, looking for a second? I'll second that. All in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, oh, sorry.
There's always a room for discussion before the vote.
I thought we had it on the table before.
My question is basically what it comes down to, it is, Mr. Mayor, do we, do we have a budget for training for city officials? Such as billing clerks, such as whatever, all the way along the line? Such as billing clerks, such as whatever, all the way along the line? And by sending one individual to a little bit more expensive one, are we cutting anybody else short? That's my question, or is it basically?
We budget for council training, mayor training, administrator, utility clerk, public works, and arena. Now, they don't always go, and I don't always go, it doesn't work sometimes.
And that's why I'm asking, you know, if there is a, a small line saying that so much for training, and one or two individuals take that one year, is it cutting anybody short is my question, and if it is not, then I'm in favor of this. But if it is getting close, that, then we would look at the quality of training over how many different departments.
No, it doesn't cut into anybody else's budget.
Okay, great, alright. So we actually, um, so we do have a motion on the table, um, it was, uh, by Jim, seconded by myself. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Anything else? Any else you have for that? Okay, alright, at this time, um, Chuck came, so we're gonna go back to number thirteen, and we are going to have a fire department report by the chief Chuck Mertens.
Excuse me, everybody.
Any Chuck?
Um, for November calls, we had, uh, seven medicals for our calls for a total for the month of November. Um, training, our November training was kind of a two-tier deal, what we did is half the department toured, toured the communication division at Sterns County Dispatch. And then the other half worked on pre-plans and updated emergency phone numbers. Uh, my pre-planned system is in the rescue truck, and that's got plans, four plans of various business places, electrical cutouts, gas, and all that kinda stuff. So we go through them and update them periodically. Our new firefighters just started their firefighter one class on Monday, December first, over at St. Martin. So they'll be attending that three nights a week, uh, with a couple Saturday classes included, that's a hundred and thirty-two hour course. And then we'll be applying for the American Firefighters Grant again. Uh, this year, we're gonna apply for pagers, being communications is one of their highlights. So we can update our pagers. Um, looking at that, the, it's a five percent share for the city. So to replace all of our pagers will only cost the city five hundred and fifty bucks, if we get the grant. And it comes out to about eleven seven is what, eleven thousand seven hundred dollars for pagers, setup, programmed, and that kinda stuff. We have about four left that still have some warranty. Um, the rest of them don't, we've been sending in two to four a year to get repaired, so. Starting to get to that time to look at something, and being this popped up, that'd be something good to apply for that, so. Um, Cindy's helping me with the narrative and some of the writing stuff, and I'm working on all number crunching and call volume and all that stuff. Yes, Pat?
Chief, is that a federal program or a state program?
Federal program.
Okay, have you ever received money from this federal program before?
In two thousand nine, we did for our turnout gear, and that was sixty-some thousand dollars at a cost for us of about twenty-three hundred.
Okay.
Um, also, just wanted the residents to remember to keep their fire hydrants and stuff open on their block. And I do have some information for the year up until December first. And then once we get done with the year, we'll put one together again. Um, at this time so far, we're at sixty-six calls total for the year, two thousand thirteen was seventy-two, and two thousand twelve was sixty-seven, so that's kind of right in the, in the realm there on that. Um, type of calls, we had two fires, uh, fifty-eight, uh, rescue medical calls. Um, interesting thing on the rescue medical calls, the majority was on Sunday and Saturdays. Um, we had a couple extracations, one flammable gas, uh, three canceled or dispatched canceled and route. Uh, one false alarm, and then one alarm system malfunction is where we're at right now with, with that stuff on our calls. And our busiest month last year was August. We had twelve calls in August. So, kinda interesting, all that stuff bounces around and changes a little bit. Uh, so far this year, we've been averaging fourteen members per call through, averaged throughout the whole year, so. That's pretty good, so. And like I say, we'll have some more information together for you folks after we get the year finished up and that kinda thing like that. Any questions?
Have you been out doing any ICE, um, training yet?
Uh, not yet, we're looking to get that scheduled again. Um, we're gonna be working with, uh, another department possibly on that, is what we're looking at doing, so.
Okay, um, anybody else have any other questions for, uh, Chuck Martin as the fire chief at all? Okay, if not, uh, thanks so much, Chuck, for coming tonight and giving us the report. Alright, moving right along to sixteen, other matters of concern, related matters. Um, A, um, now, acknowledge the city attorney letter dated, uh, November tenth, two thousand fourteen regarding the gambling donations. Marty, would you like to take that place?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I, this item doesn't require any action or, or discussion, it's only our attorney's, uh, recommendation for council policy and accepting donations, pretty standard, uh, pretty standard policy in light of, uh, the last year. Um, pretty straightforward, I just wanted to make sure all of you had it in your packet and acknowledged that you saw it in there. Otherwise, no action is required.
Okay.
Will this reflect on the resolution that we just passed?
Which one?
The one accepting donations?
No. That was October, November.
Okay.
Thank you. Alright, um, B, knowledge, CenterPoint Energy Letter dated eleven twenty-one fourteen regarding the rate increase. Marty, you just wanna mention on that one?
Uh, I put it in your package, there isn't anything we can do about it, it looks like it's going, uh, a, an increase of a dollar and a half per month from eight to nine and a half uh, of delivery charge, or delivery increases from sixteen, six, three, seven to eighteen, four, five, eight, whatever that means. It just means everybody's rates are going up. A typical residential comp- customer refund will be about eleven dollars. I don't know what that means either. All it is, they raised, CenterPoint raised the rates. And in, in light of that as well, in your packet, and I didn't, it wasn't on your agenda, is in Spectron's, um, October service.
Yeah, I did.
Was your council meeting dates that Cindy put together?
Yeah, sorry, I did not see a couple of those things on the agenda.
Yeah.
Um, obviously, uh, pertaining to the, uh, two thousand fourteen attendance record, uh, for the council members, uh, make sure that, um, Cindy and Marty are requesting and asking for your timesheets in, uh, by the end of this week, which is, uh, December fifth. So if you get the opportunity to fill that out, and then give them, um, a report of all the additional meetings that you may have attended, so they can have a record of that, and they can double check things with the minutes. Okay, and then, um, obviously, you have in front of you too, um, from our building inspector, um, there was a, um, a bill, uh, for, uh, six hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-nine cents, and that is pertaining to, um, some um, work that they needed to do with some existing, um, building, uh, permit things that went on for the month of October, correct, Marty?
That's true.
Okay, alright, and, um, was, did we need to act on that at all, or was that just?
No, council asked to have that part of their packet, and so.
Okay.
Whenever we get that, I try to put it in there.
Alright, great, okay. Alright, um, and then one other thing we do need to add, um, would be underneath sixteen would be letter C. Um, and you do have that in front of you, this came from Chris Boucher, uh, from the Coal Spring, Richmond Police Department. Uh, it looks like there was, uh, the availability of a written, um, a report here this evening, uh, pertaining to, um, some things that are going on currently right now, uh, within the police departments, and then also, um, the activities and incidences, um, you know, for Coal Spring, and then also a couple pages into that through the city of Richmond. Um, I think one thing that we, we have done in the past, um, is at the end of the year, or first part usually of January, um, um, I think, uh, we get a real nice, uh, report from, uh, from the police department, uh, talking about all the activities and what happened throughout, uh, the year, so I would expect, uh, Chris, uh, and everybody there will be putting something together for us again, um, preferably sometime in the January meeting maybe, or February?
It's gonna be February or March.
February or March by the time.
January's meeting is January seventh, and they won't have.
They won't have everything ready to go by then, alright. So this is more just FYI here for you to read over and look at. Does anybody have any questions at all? Pertaining to this, um, Coal Spring, Richmond Police Department? Again, too, we, one of the things that we've always asked for in the councils, we, we like, um, the availability of written reports on the things and the activities, um, that are happening in and around our city and our city limits, so it keeps us aware of, of some of the, the things that are going on, so, which this is very helpful, um, for us to be able to take some time to look at.
Chief thought it was interesting in, uh, Richmond, June's call, calls were dramatically down compared to the previous months.
Hmm, okay.
Doesn't know why.
We're all in our good behaviors, which that.
For June.
For June. Alright, any questions on that at all?
It'll be just kinda interesting, uh, taking this against, uh, next year's when they, they're not taking care of Wakefield Township.
There you go, that's great, yeah, good point, Pat, good point. Alright, um, does anybody have anything else to add right now, currently, a, a number sixteen at all? Um, I just wanna mention one thing, um, to the public, uh, that remember tomorrow evening, um, in the city of Richmond, um, we're taking the opportunity to close up the Main Street, um, we are having a tree lighting ceremony, um, and a lot of other phenomenal activities that are continually going on, um, throughout the city with businesses being open, and, um, obviously, come on out, um, it sounds like the weather's gonna cooperate, be a little bit nicer uh, than it was, uh, I guess, last year, so, um, let's really try to make this a fun holiday activity, and have as many people and many residents as we can come on out and share some good, uh, holiday spirit with everybody, so. It'll be good to, uh, uh, see, uh, faces out there too, that you don't usually get the opportunity to see that much throughout the winter when everybody's hibernating, so, um, let's just make this a really fun activity, I'm looking forward to it, so. Um, anybody else have anything else to add? Pat?
I would just like to ask, uh, the city administrator to sum up all of our electrical bills and find out who are highest, what area is our highest, uh, whether it be this, the filtration plant, whether it be the sewer plant, or who's the highest, uh, if anybody read the Saint Cloud Times today, I didn't know that there was all kinds of money available for solar power if we could operate some of this stuff on, you know, if it would be profitable, I shouldn't say profitable, savable, or you know, uh, conservable, to, uh, maybe go that route in, in one or two of our highest usage buildings.
Hands down is the wastewater treatment plant, and followed right on the heels is the River Lake Civic Arena.
But I'm just saying that out there, there would be plenty of room for solar panels, you know? If it could be more self-sufficient, that would bring costs down onto the sewer activity itself. And, uh, if we can get into some kind of a program like that.
Alright.
Uh, I would just like a little bit of, of, uh, time and effort spent and seeing if it's feasible. So I've, I.
I like that.
Wondering if other council people would be in support of this, uh, you know, if they direct a couple hours towards it.
Who's putting this on, did you say?
Uh, it was put on by the state of Minnesota.
I think it was, yeah, I think it was, I, I briefed it, I didn't get a chance to read the whole article, but I did brief it.
I didn't read it word for word either, but it said that the individual was what, resort owner down here, uh, his, some of his electrical bills were up to ten thousand dollars a month, uh, and he hopes to save at least fifteen percent with use of solar, so, you know, sometimes it's all looks good, but if, if you're, the investment is way higher than your savings, it, it doesn't, doesn't pay either, but maybe we can just, uh, look in that direction once, and if we can bring our costs down, maybe we can bring our costs down all the way.
It also said that they were set up on low interest rate loans.
Yep.
Right, so. And if we really wanna think outside the box, we could maybe, um, pick up a fairly slightly used uh, windmill from, from the Saint Cloud Veterans Administrative Building, but that's.
Go to Sweden or where, by the way to get it repaired, but.
That might, that might be another thing, so.
But anyway, I was just wondering if it was.
That's great.
Interest in other part, people in the council be looking at to that, uh, because down there, I think that is one of our main overheads.
Well, I think it's something that we, that we all, that we all really, you know, need to be kind of concerned about, yeah, there's, there's probably areas within the city, um, with some particular buildings that we might need to be looking at some type of alternative ways to, um, to heat for electricity, um, so, yeah, that's definitely, uh, I, I feel that's an important thing that we will continually need to look at and address, so. Thanks, Pat, for bringing that up, that's great. Okay, anybody else have anything? Okay, looks like numbers, Jim, oh.
Just a reminder, there will be no, no meeting in December workshop on the eighteenth. The next meeting will be January seventh.
Right.
Yep.
Currently, right now, unless something comes up where we are going to need a workshop, I, I, I don't know, um, and I don't think we're gonna have that. Okay? Marty's writing a note here for me, hold it.
Do you wanna, you and Pat wanna talk about that?
Oh, Marty just brought this up, and it was great. Um, Pat, do you wanna mention, um, our meeting that we had on Monday night, uh, for the hundred and twenty-fifth, uh, year anniversary for the city of Richmond, that'll be coming up for next year?
Uh, we're still looking for ideas, we had approximately, uh, what would you say, uh, twenty to twenty-five uh, city resi- city, uh, community residents, they weren't all from the city, bringing ideas to help celebrate the Richmond's hundred and twenty-fifth birthday of the incorporation. Uh, we had a copy of the incorporation here, which was kinda interesting, finding out some of the names on there. There's still some of those names or family names in the community, a hundred and twenty-five years later. And, uh, with that, we are looking into all kinds of, uh, really thinking out of the box, everything from fashion shows to, to museums, to, uh, different activities, uh, we're just looking into all this kinda stuff, uh, and hopefully that, if you have any ideas out there, please bring them to Marty here at City Hall, you can call my number after six o'clock in the evening. Uh, Marty until about four, uh, and we're still always looking for activities, and we're going, or ideas, and we're gonna meet again on December thirtieth, was it? Twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth, okay, on Monday night here at City Hall, uh, seven o'clock, and I believe, I believe Marty bought cookies and coffee, and that was great, so just a little bit reminder out there, we're, you know, I had some phone calls, uh, we advertised it in the paper, uh, some great ideas, we will be addressing them all, and see what's gonna work.
And you're leaning towards conducting this celebration?
Over River Lake Day Week, I'm gonna say, because some of the activities will probably be earlier on in the week, going through the weekend. Not saying it's gonna be four days long, five days long, three days long yet, that is way premature right now. So if anybody has time, uh, whether people are laid off in the winter, wanna do some research on the city, whether they're retired and wanna do, or if they just want to uh, use their spare time to do it, uh, we'll send them in the right direction to get some in- information on history, and, and maybe this will help some committees out.
What were the number, what would you say the number one ideas were? I, I thought the horse, the draft horse, is that what you call it?
Draft horse pull was one of the, and, uh, something to do with either a fashion show or beard growing contest type thing was one. Bringing back that era, uh, dressing that era, that was, uh, a, a highlight, uh, and, you know, there was a lot of, of some minor things, uh, one, one item was brought by a business person is to turn Main Street back to the eighteen nineties for one day. The people, the, the tavern workers would be dressed that way, the butcher shop, the, you know, the post office people, or, or I guess it was Pony Express, but anyway. Maybe that's still Pony Express, but. But anyway, that was one idea is to, one of the days of the week, it would, it would, it would roll, roll the, you know, the time back. And, uh, so there's, there's a lot of good out-of-the-box thinking type ideas, and it's, it sounds like it's gonna be a very fun time.
Great, thank you very much, Pat. Thanks, Marty, for bringing that up. Anything else? Alright, uh, number seventeen, the next meeting we have would be our regular council meeting, and that will be, uh, January seventh of two thousand fifteen, that'll be at six thirty here, um, at City Hall, so, and obviously, before we look for an adjournment tonight, um, on behalf of the city, um, all the people that work for the city, on behalf of the council members here tonight, um, I do want to wish everybody a very happy members here tonight, um, I do want to wish everybody a very happy, enjoy us holiday season, um, making sure that they are all safe, um, and, um, we hope to see everybody, uh, next year and then also tomorrow evening, so. On that note, I'll be looking for an adjournment for this evening.
So moved.
I have a motion by Pat, seconded by Jeff, all in favor?
All right.
I oppose, so carried. Done.